Thank you. We're called meeting to order. We expect the acknowledgement that the county of Halliburton is located on Trinity Treaty 20 Mitzi Seagog territory and in the traditional territory that Mitzi Seagog and Chipewa nations collectively known as William Treaty's first nations. We acknowledge a shared presence and indigenous nations throughout the area and recognize its original inhabitants as stewards in lands and waters since time immemorial. I just didn't have any real opening remarks this morning, but I did want to recognize some people that did get some awards this past week. And there was King Charles, the third coronation medalist, and I'd just like to recognize them at County Council today with council's indulgent. I'm pleased to acknowledge today that the local residents of the King's Coronation Medal. This prestigious honor is given remarkable individuals who have made significant contributions to their communities through exceptional service and dedication. Thirty thousand medals were minted and to be distributed amongst forty million Canadians. Our Member of Parliament's office received over a hundred amazing nominations for a riding with a hundred and twenty thousand residents. Of those MP Smale had thirty medals to award. So you can see what a huge honor this is. Today, I'd like to extend our congratulations to Brenda Boomhauer from Wilberforce, by the way. Brenda was recognized for her ongoing work in the community, especially with the Royal Canadian Legion and Ladies' Auxiliary. For the past ten years, Brenda created fundraising and managed a program called Vet to Vet, a weekend of peer support for veterans suffering from PTSD. Each year, twelve veterans and supporters, spouses, receive free accommodation, meals, outdoor activities, and she did a lot of this while battling cancer and grieving the loss of her husband, Bill. Reverend Canon Joan Kavanaugh Clerk. Reverend Joan is tireless advocate for those in need, particularly of the homeless. Soon after her arrival in the area, over a decade ago, she and her team of volunteers established a thrift shop that has since doubled in size due to demand. She is also known to provide emergency shelter, food, and clothing to those in crisis, working in tandem with local firefighters, police, mental health, and EMS. On top of that, she also works with her dedicated team to host a Christmas kids sale so that local youth can come and shop for their family members with a maximum price for each item set at fifty cents. Linda Witten. Linda has been recognized for her two decades of volunteerism in the Menden area. She has since, she has twice been Rotary Club president, spearheaded such events as Canada Day, Rotary Fest, golf tournaments, and served many municipal committees. It's been said that Linda volunteers for everything, contributes to everything, participates in everything, and never seems to get tired. Fay Martin. Fay has been a community organizer since nineteen sixties. She moved to Halliburton in nineteen ninety-seven as a founding executive director of Children's Service Agency, now point in time, a center for children. In two thousand and seven, she created Places for People, an organization dedicated to finding and creating affordable, stable housing in Halliburton County. She's been on the board of directors for the Quarter Lakes Halliburton Housing Corporation for the past ten years, and founded the Menden Hills Housing Task Force, is a current director on the local branch of Habitat for Humanity, and been a producer with the local theatre group, and is now in the process of completing her first book. Ken Mott. Ken was co-founder of the Halliburton County Heat Bank, an organization that provides those in need with home heating and firewood. He's also been entitled state volunteer with the Wilberforce Food Bank for the past decade, often working thirty hours a week all year round. In fact, he was instrumental in establishing a central food network in two thousand and fifteen. Last year, he drove over twenty-five thousand kilometers, resulting in a hundred and twenty thousand pounds of food being distributed across the network, which is Halliburton County. Dick Shell. Richard Shell has been donating his time to the community since nineteen sixties. He's been involved in various Rotary Clubs since that time. Has started the auxiliary unit with the Ontario Provincial Police in Menden and retired in two thousand and thirteen with badge number zero zero seven after forty-six years. He also served with the Menden's Kinflam Club, a ten-year member of the Menden Food Bank, a forty-nine-year member of the Masonic Lodge in Menden, spent ten years as Sergeant-at-Arms at the Royal Canadian Legion, Branch six thirty-six. He helped with the annual Terry Fox Run for the past twenty years. He fills in for Santa Claus during annual parades in Menden and Halliburton and is active member of the local church and cemetery board. We also have to congratulate Steve Cooper and two more recipients from Halliburton County who have not yet publicly been named. In addition, we thank the Halliburton County's kind and generous volunteers for making Halliburton County a better place through immeasurable contributions. I'd like a round of applause. Thank you. Any disclosure of any interest? Approval of the agenda?
Yes, thank you, Warren. Just a quick note for council, a couple changes, and I do apologize for the confusion. The closed session identified under F on the agenda will request that council move that to the end. In dealing solely with the vicious physician recruitment, the education session, that was an error in my putting it there. Chief Slatter and Dr. Feldman will speak to that in open session this morning.
Okay, would you read the resolution?
That the March twelfth, twenty twenty-five Halliburton County Council agenda be approved as amended.
Move the councillor Shell, councillor Ferry. All in favor? It's Kerry, thank you. So just for presentations, EMS, we'll have Dr. Feldman coming in with chief.
Good morning, Warden Burton and members of Halliburton County Council. I'm here to present a report on the Medical Priority Dispatch System with Dr. Michael Feldman. The Medical Priority Dispatch System is a new dispatching system for paramedic services in the province. So with Lindsay Central Ambulance Communication Center, this is scheduled to be implemented on March twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. And it is a province-wide initiative that Ontario is enhancing and modernizing its emergency health service system. MPDS, as it's referred to, is a universal standard for emergency dispatchers, and it will create an efficient use of the ambulances in Halliburton County with balanced emergency coverage. Should improve our response times on, and based on patient care needs and priority. And a big change is that it uses, utilizes a color code system to prioritize the call and allocate resources. There is a short video that was put together by, by myself with my colleagues from City of Quarter Lakes and Peterborough that we'd like to show right now and the Lindsay Dispatch Center as well.
This system while paramedic services preserve emergency medical capacity for those who need it most. It's about the right care, the right people, at the right time. For non-urgent healthcare or social service needs, please visit your local county website to find alternatives on nine-one-one. Stay safe and thank you.
Thank you. We now have a presentation with Dr. Mike Feldman. I'd like to introduce Dr. Feldman now, and there is a presentation, PowerPoint presentation that we'll refer to.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you very much. Can you hear me okay, first of all?
Yes.
Okay, so my name's Dr. Mike Feldman. I work as a, as an EMS medical director in the County of Simcoe and District of Muskoka. I'm also a medical director for Ontario's communication centers in southern and eastern Ontario. And as Chief Slatter mentioned, the Ministry of Health has embarked on an initiative that's been going for quite a few years, actually. They decided well before COVID to upgrade the ambulance communications centers in Ontario to a protocol that's used around the world in over five thousand dispatch centers. It's been translated into forty-five languages, and it's more accurate than the current system that they use for dispatching nine-one-one calls. By way of background, I'm a former paramedic and ambulance communications officer. I work as an emergency physician at Sunnybrook and Collingwood, so I'm well apprised, I'm well apprised of the, the, the current system and where we've come from and where we're headed. Next slide, please. So I'd like to start right up front with some key messages that I'd like to leave you with. The old dispatch protocol tends to over-prioritize calls. We send most calls out lights and sirens when you call nine-one-one, but this doesn't really match up with patient need, and I'll talk a bit more about that shortly. The new dispatch protocol is a more accurate way of assessing urgency. We spend a little more time on the phone with the nine-one-one callers, but we get more accurate information and provide an enhanced set of first aid instructions for the callers. This additional information gives us a better idea of what resources are actually going to be needed by the patient and with what level of urgency. This is not about any kind of cuts in service. The, I'm, I'm an advisor to the Ministry of Health. I don't work for the Ministry of Health, but from what I can see, they've been putting a lot of resources into this project in an area of, of paramedic services that's, that's really has not changed in, in several decades. So we're actually coming up to the standard of care that's used around the world. It's been used in Toronto for several decades, in Niagara Falls as well, and, and the rest of Ontario is finally catching up. What this will do for our system is it'll decrease, not eliminate, obviously, because you can't know perfectly what you're going to face when you reach a nine-one-one call, but it will decrease many of the unnecessary lights and sirens responses. But this is in no way limiting any resources. There's no, it's not a cost-cutting measure. It's not taking ambulances off the road. By prioritizing more accurately, though, we feel that, that ambulances will be available to respond to, to emergency calls. In many communities, because so many calls were dispatched as emergencies, they would often run out of ambulances and there would be delays for some life-threatening calls. Now, there still will be some potential for delays in the system, but those will tend to be for low acuity calls. And the launch at the Lindsay Central Ambulance Communication Center will be on March twenty-sixth. Next slide, please. So the old protocol was called the Dispatch Priority Card Index Version Two, DPCI Two, and about seventy to eighty percent of calls were dispatched with lights and sirens. But we know from, from many studies that only about five to ten percent of calls are life-threatening. And so when you're sending out all your resources immediately, this introduces delays. You would, in many communities, you would have instances where no ambulances were available for a period of time, and you'd get another nine-one-one call, and you would just have to sit and wait on it. Next slide, please. The new system was developed by, by someone who's like me. His career started as, as an ambulance dispatcher, and then he went to medical school and became a physician. It's based at a Salt Lake City initially, and now it's been exported around the world. Like I said, five thousand dispatch centers, forty-six languages. It's the standard, not only in parts of Ontario like Toronto, but all over the province of British Columbia, all of England, and many parts of the US. And it's really considered the standard of care, is the most widely used dispatch protocol in the world. As I said earlier, not only
Sorry, Dr. Feldman.
Go ahead.
Your voice got really low, so we're not sure if you're moved away a bit from your microphone or what's going on.
Can you hear me okay now?
No, not really.
I haven't changed any settings.
Oh, there we go. That's better.
Okay. At what point did I lose you?
You were discussing the creation of the, of the system.
Right. So all I was saying was that this dispatch center is the most widely used in the world, and it's the standard of care in many parts of the world, and not only Toronto, but the entire province of British Columbia, all of England uses it, and most parts of the United States use it as well. Not only do we spend a little bit more time on the phone trying to drill down into what the nature of the emergency is, but once we have that, the first aid and CPR instructions are much more detailed, and, and they have instructions for just about any situation you can imagine. The Medical Priority Dispatch System will then give us a priority that's really based on patient acuity, but also it's been linked to medical evidence. There are many, many studies validating this technique. And unlike the old DPCI system, which is on version two, MPDS is continually improved based on research, and it's up to version fourteen. I only say this to say that it's continually undergoing improvements and changes, whereas the old dispatch protocol is not. Next slide, please. So under the new protocol, we used to have, under the old protocol, there were really two levels of urgency. There was urgent or lights and siren emergent. Under the new one, there's five levels of priority. And as you can see, these percentages on the right show you the different levels of urgency, and this is based actually on Ontario data in other parts of Ontario where we've deployed it. The highest priority is a purple call, and it's highly likely that the patient is in cardiac arrest or respiratory arrest. And when we, there's no perfect precision because we're evaluating caller, not, not the actual patient. But you can see a purple call is very predictive of a life-threatening event, whereas a green call, the lowest priority, is, has a one in a thousand chance of being life-threatening. So the reason this enhances safety and accuracy is, number one, we can better predict which calls are going to be life-threatening. And secondly, there's a lot of literature that shows that when you're responding needlessly to calls with lights and sirens, there's a risk of collision for emergency vehicles. But not only that, but in the wake of the passage of the emergency vehicle, other vehicles are involved in collisions as well. And this is sometimes termed the wake effect. And what this is going to do is it's going to decrease lights and sirens responses and decrease the risk of collisions, both of the emergency vehicle and in the wake of its passage. There is some degree of delay permissible for the orange, yellow, and green calls. The intent of the protocol is that these calls will be dispatched immediately, but when no ambulances are available, instead of randomly having delays because you ran out of ambulances, the delays will be, will be in the lower acuity calls, where there's anywhere from point four percent to point one percent chance of a life-threatening call. And when there are delays, the protocol includes callbacks to the patient at regular intervals to assess them and make sure their condition hasn't changed. Next slide, please. So how does this affect stakeholders? I expect, and I can't predict specifically what's going to happen in the county of Halliburton, but I expect in communities where they were depleting ambulances because of all the lights and sirens resources that were not necessary, that the true life-threatening emergencies will see some improved response times. I predict, although I can't speak specifically to Halliburton, that there will be some delays to the green calls and potentially to the yellow and orange calls. The exact magnitude of the delay, I can't, I can't state. It varies depending on how many ambulances are available in your community. This optimizes paramedic resource utilization. In communities that have tiered response agreements, tiered responses were written for the language of the DPCI protocol, and tiered response agreements are being basically translated to use the language of the MPDS protocol. Let me give you an example. If you have an agreement with, with your fire services to go to chest pain calls, in the old DPCI days, and we're still in the old DPCI days for another week and a half, if you had, let's say, a young person playing baseball who pulled a muscle when they swung a bat and they were experiencing chest pain, this pulled muscle call would be dispatched as a lights and siren call because chest pain, under the old protocol, always meant an emergency. Under the new protocol, we'll be able to distinguish between the seventeen-year-old with a pulled muscle and the eighty-year-old who's having a heart attack. And so if you had a tiered response agreement that said you were going to all life-threatening chest pain calls, the pulled muscle calls are going to be taken out of that mix. And so the paramedic services are working with fire services to translate the language that was used so that the intent of the tiered response agreement is, is preserved, but that it aligns with the MPDS priorities, where, where some chest pains are now not going to be emergency calls. Members of the public will spend a few more seconds to minutes on the nine-one-one call with an ambulance communications officer. This doesn't delay the ambulance responding, but rather they're getting more information while the ambulance is on its way, and they'll get, they'll spend some more time getting better instructions. One of the things that the Ministry of Health has done that I've not seen in the past is they're collecting vast amounts of data on the performance of the new system, and they're using that to make adjustments in the system, a system that has been largely, you know, stagnant for many years, is going to be continuously improved to meet the needs of the, of the patients. Lastly, one of the things with this project is the Ministry of Health has instituted reporting structures involving committees at the local level. So Lindsay Central Ambulance Communication Center has new committees that have representatives from the paramedic services, from the Ministry of Health, me, and, and those committees will regularly evaluate the performance of the dispatch protocol and report back to the stakeholders, as well as report on the provincial level, and be able to make adjustments to procedures and policies in a way that, that we have not seen before in this area. Next slide, please. I'm happy to take any questions. This is a provincial initiative, and the province of Ontario Ministry of Health has an email that they've created for answering questions from stakeholders. And so if you think of anything after this presentation, you can take note of this email, askmpds@ontario.garcia, and a member of the Ministry of Health MPDS team will respond to your questions. All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, doctor, and thank you very much to, to chief as well. I guess I'll start off the questions maybe with one that's, are you finding that the, the hospitals' emergencies are being, I don't want to say clogged up, but are, are busier because people may load and go without waiting for an ambulance, save for a broken arm or pulled muscle?
I would say, speaking as a physician practicing in Ontario, I work at Sunnybrook, but also at Collingwood, which is a, you know, a much smaller-sized hospital. Anytime you open the papers, you see that there's a healthcare crisis in terms of access to primary care. And I would say a large proportion of our patients in the emergency department are coming because, for, for less urgent problems because they're not able to access their own family physician in a timely manner, or they lack a family physician. Some of these people do arrive by ambulance, and there are a variety of reasons that they come by ambulance, whether it's, they lack resources for transportation, or they, maybe there's some degree of anxiety about their condition, and they don't have a primary care provider who could reassure them and, and stay in touch with them in terms of what their condition is. So they do access resources through the nine-one-one system. Sometimes it's unnecessary, but we don't really have a way with the current system of teasing that apart. One of the, one of the things about the MPDS program is not only does it prioritize more accurately, but it also is a provision which we have not yet implemented, but we're hoping to, that we'll actually be able to divert callers, for example, to, to a nurse or to telehealth, to go over in more detail and to suggest alternatives. That has been implemented in Toronto and Niagara Falls and British Columbia. It's not yet being rolled out in Ontario, but it's part of the future state of our system, where we'll be able to connect a, a, a non-urgent patient with a healthcare provider who can give them some detailed advice on how and where to access care and how to access care.
Questions? Councillor Dave.
Thanks so much for the presentation, and my question may be to either the chief or to yourself. I'm wondering if the chief may be best placed to answer this one, if you can. I wonder if you would comment a bit more on the potential impact on our volunteer fire departments? For example, if a call that was previously considered a top-level call, and therefore a medical assist went into volunteer fire because of chest pain, shortness of breath, would, say, say that call now falls lower on the tier of color codes that you've got, would you anticipate that the volunteer fire would not be called as a medical assist because it's considered lower tier? Or would they still be called, but perhaps they would be the primary caregiver for longer because the ambulance wouldn't get there in the same amount of time? So it's almost a binary scenario. I, I wonder, will there be less volunteer fire or more volunteer fire?
May I start?
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
That's a very astute question and very well stated, actually, because both, both are possible. So the number of lights and sirens calls are going to go down. And as Chief Slatter will explain how the, the, the MPDS priority has been translated for the tiered response agreement, fire services are generally going to see fewer emergency calls and therefore fewer calls. There is a possibility of spending a longer time on scene, not necessarily because of the tiered response, but because of calls where fire would have gone anyway for other non-medical reasons, but the medical component is not as urgent. So by way of example, I'll, I'll use something that, that you don't have in your area. But if you take, for example, four hundred series highways, where the high, because of modern highway design with the, with the median, so as a divided highway, cars are rarely crossing over onto the other side because of airbag systems and seat belts. In most collisions on the four hundred series highways, patients aren't injured, but fire departments go for other reasons, like to secure the scene for safety, for, for fluid spills, for fires, for deactivating airbags and so on, and sometimes for extrication as well. And sometimes it's a lower priority for the paramedics. So in fire services where they're servicing calls that have these divided highways, sometimes there is a longer wait for paramedics, and, and it is a bit of a pain point for some of these fire services, and they're instituting protocols actually in some towns to assess patients. And after a patient assessment, they've engaged with their medical director and have a series of criteria where they can be released from the scene if this happens too often. But that's a very good point, that there will be fewer lights and sirens emergencies, and there may be a few calls where the non-medical need for fire brings them to the scene, but the acuity medically is lower.
That's fascinating, and thank you very much.
Other questions? Councillor Row.
Having been a former firefighter myself, is it also safe to say that when the firepeople get there first, they can do a lot of the stuff that the paramedics would otherwise have to do, such as gather information, possibly get hold of the meds, collect those in one particular area if there's a traumatic issue with any other people in the, in the facility to calm them down and, and to sort of get them out of the way? So is that something that you would obviously continue to support?
Thank you. The evidence for tiered response, actually, one of the leading areas for medically, and, and, you know, doctors always look to research in the medical literature. One of the leading areas that, that proved the benefit of tiered response was actually Ontario in the nineteen nineties when the first tiered response agreements were being drafted. So for, for some medical situations like cardiac arrest, firefighters with defibrillators and performing CPR actually measurably improve survival in all the communities in which they serve. In other medical entities, the benefit is more difficult to measure because these people, you know, aren't necessarily deteriorating as abruptly. But there is benefit when, when we send tiered responses. It's usually because there are other procedures that firefighters can do. So for example, in some communities, they might be giving EpiPens for anaphylaxis, and if they're there first, they should be the ones doing it. Or if there's, you know, severe Or if there's, you know, severe bleeding, they should be stopping the bleeding. And in other calls, uh just simply sort of as you say. You know, assisting the paramedics, assisting the patients and bystanders, uh helping to inject a degree of calm and control to a chaotic scene. Uh, is also beneficial. Medically, that's harder to measure. But the idea of the tiered response agreement is to target firefighter responses to where there is potential patient benefit.
Are there questions? Comments? Chief, have you anything to add?
Yeah, I'd just like to add, I did meet with uh the four uh fire chiefs on uh Friday last week to discuss. Uh, the discuss the new dispatch system and how that's going to impact them. Uh, some similar questions uh came up. So we are. Uh, reviewing the tiered response agreement that's currently in place and will be making some changes such as. Right now they are responding to all chest pain calls, but we're going to look at, you know, any high acuity chest pain call versus all chest pain calls. To be incorporated into uh the language. They do understand the potential of a car crash. Going and and being there for other needs and and maybe being there uh longer. And then how does that work if uh if, you know, there is someone there that is a low acuity injury and we're going to be delayed. Uh, the other piece with uh with that that we're looking at. Um, as I'm learning, Halliburton County is very unique in its geography. And there are situations where we do still require the uh local fire departments for access. Whether that is because someone's a couple kilometers in and we have five feet of snow. Or boat access in the in the summertime to to islands. So some of those pieces uh we're working on. The example came for, you know, if someone was a yellow, um, that could be delayed. Right now, the fire department would be sent immediately if there's an access issue, but we're working on a process where. They maybe aren't going to be sent until we know that the the paramedics are sent uh to coordinate that. So they're not getting there and waiting. An hour or or longer for us.
Thank you. We have a resolution?
That medical priority dispatch system, Ontario's new ambulance dispatch protocol presentation. And staff and associate staff report EMS O one twenty twenty five, be received as information.
And if someone move, Counselor Dayo and a second by Counselor Shell. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Um, consent agenda. Anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? Counselor Carter?
Yes, the um, the Board of Health summary. The uh, the question I have is that in here in. Uh, I guess eight point one, the cost share budget, it talks about. The approved budget will see a dollar twenty three increase per capita to each local funding partner. Over the twenty twenty four contributions. Does that affect our budget? Um, or exactly how does that fit in? And I don't, you know, without having the numbers. The dollar twenty three sounds reasonable or exorbitant. I'm not sure what it is, so.
Through through the warden, um, we did receive our uh total twenty twenty five levy request. And it is within uh the budgeted numbers. Um, I think we have about a six thousand dollar surplus. Of what we budgeted to what the levy amount will be.
It just adds that we received that yesterday at about four thirty. That's why.
Okay, so when we do our budget, we do an estimate of what.
Sorry, just just to just to explain further. So when Dr. Balking was here, I believe it was October or November of last year. They provided us uh uh what they felt would be the budget increase for going into twenty five. Uh, the new consolidated board has honored that. A piece, uh, there was a a piece that was being picked that was over and above that that was being picked up through the transition funding for the. Uh, for the new board, uh, as as Ms. Robinson stated, where. Our but the numbers were resolved, we came on six that sixty two hundred dollars under budget uh with what was provided to us in October.
Okay, well, I guess my only thing is that we try to work with this group to see that they can get us. A budget before we have to finalize ours because this time we're close, but next time, who knows, right?
Just, yeah, I I agree and I and and not to, um, I appreciate we're going into a new with the new transition to the new board. Um, our 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 workings with the previous board were quite good as they were. Gave us certain information and lots of time for presentation accounts on consideration.
Counselor Rob?
Yeah, the other thing that uh that we need to understand is the level of time that was available for the new board to to get itself organized. Uh, they did not know that they had any money or what was going on until the second or third week of December. And so at the end of the day, um, there was a lot of unfortunate. Pro- prolonging of how to get the numbers put together. And so uh when the numbers were put together. Uh, it produced a uh a significant reduction. Now, there are other things going on as we speak. Uh, again, we'll probably know more next Thursday because next Thursday is the official meeting where we're actually going to get into a bit more of that stuff. So I think you're going to see that uh that over the period of the next twelve months or so. There's going to be a significant realignment of costs in in terms of where we're going to be going. And hopefully we'll be able to report back some significant savings, which is all what we expected and and also better coverage. So. For for the purposes of 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 what we're doing right now, that is the most accurate number that we could generate at this point in time.
You know, the questions on the consent agenda? If not, resolution?
That the items listed under heading a consent agenda for March twelfth, twenty twenty five be adopted as presented.
It's moved by McCackney, second by uh Counselor Danson. All in favor? It's carried. We're down to consideration of reports, Office of the C A O, Chief Administration Officer.
Yeah, thank you, Warden, through to the to members of council. Um, further to the presentation that was made to council. At our February twenty sixth meeting, uh, we're in the the CEO of the hospital of Ms. Ms. Nelson presented the master planning for the. For Triple H S going forward regarding a long-term care facility. Um, it was identified. With respect to the need to expand the current long-term care facilities uh within Halliburton County. We currently between the two, between the Halliburton and Minden sites, we currently have. Um, ninety-two beds, uh, they're looking to expand to a hundred and sixty beds. Um. This is important because based on the information they've received that the hundred and sixty bed facility is. Is kind of the sustainability tipping point for the operation of long-term care facilities based on the funding models provided by the province. Under the new plan, uh, the long-term care, expanded long-term care facilities for Halliburton would be consolidated. They're currently. Uh, where the 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 beds in the in the Halliburton site would be transitioned over to the new facility in Minden. Um, and the existing uh Minden site would be upgraded along with as a second phase to the development of the new facility in Minden itself. For the hundred and sixty beds. This is important because currently within Halliburton County, we have approximately four hundred and fifty people on the waiting list for long-term care spaces. Uh, and even more troubling is the wait time for those four hundred and fifty people is five to seven years. Uh, so it's 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 not, it's a significant problem with our community, but it's not exclusive to our community as well because. They're they're anticipating by the end of twenty twenty five, over fifty thousand people will be on waiting lists for long-term care beds across the province. Um, the program putting put together based on the initial estimates for the development of the new facility. Uh, by Triple H S was roughly about a forty-nine million or fifty fifty million dollar facility of which. Uh, sixty-eight percent of the funding for that new facility comes from the province, leaving thirty-two percent or sixteen million dollars. Of project funding outstanding. Um, as noted in the report, we're in a bit you bit of a unique situation here in Halliburton is we're the the lone upper tier municipality that is not. That that does not run a long-term care facility. Uh, there is a legislation passed, I believe it was two thousand and three. Uh, that exempted Halliburton County from doing it and uh running a long-term care facility uh under the provisos that it would be run by Triple H S. Which has worked out very well in both scenarios with the operation of it as well as both from the county and Triple H S perspective. However, the one issue that is 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 identified itself going forward is because Triple H S is not a municipality. They are, they can't access certain funds for the project that you would if you're traditionally run L G C facilities uh as a municipality. And as a result, as as Ms. Nelson brought forward uh at the last meeting, they're looking for support from the county. Um, to cover the remaining thirty-two percent of the project. Uh, Ms. Robinson, I met with Ms. Nelson uh about a month ago. Where we had a very good conversation on on the types of support that that we think the county could provide. Under the proviso that given our current situation, financial situation, a straight cash inflection from the county would be difficult for us, especially if that number is contemplated. That sixteen million dollars for the facility. However, the option that does exist for us is through borrowing. The county has ability to borrow money through uh Infrastructure Ontario at a at a reduced interest rate that is nor- normally available to people to. Little greater than one percent. And so we could actually borrow money on behalf of. Triple H S and it would flow through to Triple H S. And the beauty of that on for two fronts from Triple H's perspective is. They get a lower interest rate and they save considerable interest payments on the money borrowed going forward, which will allow them to. Spend more money internally on primary care and on long-term care facility uh as they move forward. Um, and also we have a greater borrowing capacity than than Triple H S does going forward. Um, we- under our discussions with Ms. uh Ms. Nelson, the impact of the county would be. Uh, financially would be minimal uh in the sense that. The, yes, we would be the borrowing authority through through I O, but the 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 payments on. Both the principal and interest of the loan would be paid for by Triple H S flown through. Flowed through the county to the province and the payback of the loan. Um, and uh, so so that is from our perspective is good. The one area we were, we had to identify was its impact on our borrowing cap- capacity for us going forward. Under the provincial legislation, we're allowed to borrow up to twenty-five percent of our own source income, which is our tax money we bring in. And anything other than grants that we bring in. Um, this we'd be well within our, I think we're roughly about four million dollars on. Uh, a month on payments with respect to the uh, the borrowing capacity limitations we have. If we were to go for this, our borrowing capacity would still would only be about one point seven million, I think it is, which is well below what our our threshold is or our restrictions is. And more importantly, in more uh aggregated terms, we would still have the capacity to borrow between thirty and thirty-five million dollars after. We would provide this this support to the hospital. So in our opinion, we don't think it would, it's not going to have any negative impact on our ability to do the capital work. That we have to do going forward uh from a borrowing capacity. So, as I, as I noted in the report, I think it's very important. Um, it's a very important thing for us to do and and move forward to support Triple H S and expanding and modernizing our long-term care facilities. Um, and we would be recommending that council authorize the treasurer and myself to move forward with the development of a of an agreement between ourselves. Triple H S and coordinate with Infrastructure Ontario for the the uh, the documentation required. To proceed with the application for the loan as required, all the borrowing documentation would come back to council for final approval before submission to the province. Uh, with that word, will Ms. Robinson answer answer any questions that may?
So questions? Uh, Counselor Shell?
This is a question the public's going to ask, what if they don't make their payments?
Well, that the terms of default would be to bluntly would be identified in the agreement, the interest, that's kind of the thing that. Um, the conversation had internally is if. Triple H S in the the unlikely space were defaulting on the loan going forward, which mean they could not operate the facility itself. Under the terms of legislation, if Triple H S cannot operate the facility, it defaults to us to operate. So, y- yes, it is there that will be addressed through the agreement itself and and documentation. Find all the financial documentation we gathered and come back to council in setting up that agreement. But it's one of those situations where if the. Um, that catastrophic event were to occur, we're dealing with another financial piece oversight. Now we're taking over the operation of facility. So it's. It's it's a situation that we've considered, but I think it's uh, um, it's. Not to the point where it would prohibit us from recommending moving forward.
So, um, obviously, you know, we need this uh facility here and and more. Um, and 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 probably faster than most other communities when you consider the uh. The median age of our our population. But when we look at the presentation. That uh, uh, Triple H S, you know, provided to us. Um, they're at stage one point one in their in their assessment. Um, and, you know, they haven't, they haven't even come up with this, you know, a diagram or a. An idea of what it is they want to build. They have had preliminary discussions in Minden. Um, but, you know, we have no, no information on. You know, what do they require in terms of water? What do they require in terms of sewage and and, you know, what does? Would we have to do in order to provide that? So although their number is fifty million. Right now, I think that that number is, you know, probably a bit speculative. Um, so what happens if it goes to sixty? You know, and they need twenty-six million. I mean, what what is it that, you know, we are, you know, agreeing to? At this point, because this is the money of our constituents that we that we are dealing with here.
Okay, um, good, good questions. I I think that you're right, they're early on in their process, but what they need for uh to proceed in the process is. The financial, they can state that they have the financial support to move forward from from their end of the borrowing. Um, and as mentioned before. The impact, the the fund, the the actual payment of the money borrowed would come from Triple H S, not from the county. So. Up until this point, I'll deal with the sixteen million dollar number right now. The on the sixteen million dollar ask, none of that sixteen million dollars. None of the payments regarding on principle and interest for that loan would be paid for by the county. It would, the money would come from Triple H S. Flowed through us and we would forward to the province. To your point about going on the on the other costs associated. Yes, these are high level costs or class D estimations on the construction of the facility. Um, that beyond just the building itself uh going forward. However, um, if you're looking at. Costs that would increase on the project around things around servicing into the site and stuff like that, there are other avenues. Of funding available beyond the borrow for the facility itself that, because they would qualify for my land funding through the province with respect to. Because they deem long-term care facility into the housing realm. So there are other government grants that can pick up things like offsite servicing and that as well. Having said all that, at this time, all we're asking council to do is is to authorize us to develop the agreement. And then we would wait until find out what happens. Are they approved? What is the total cost? What's the final number of the borrow? And then we'd be back to council going the next step. Based on our calculations and and our on the borrowing side of things, the project could could increase. I don't have the numbers off my head, but could increase a certain extent and our commentary regarding the the any impact on our borrowing capability would still hold true. Um, so depending on the magnitude of what that what that variation would be. Um, so the mo- the most important part is where we're in the process is to have the support of council to. Enter into or support based on the information we have today. We would work with I O and 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 the uh. Uh, Triple H S to 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 focus in, narrow down, get more precise on on the final numbers. The draft documentation will come back to council for final final sign off before the application uh for borrowing would be made to I O. On Triple H's behalf. Um, so that's where we are now. It's one of the asks is is we, the further application, we have to provide a letter of support. Uh, from the county to the. To Triple H S. I I would note, and this is just by by pure happenstance, I think, but I think it's a similar case is. Somebody forwarded me a number of of old articles out of the the local newspapers. You go back to nineteen ninety-eight. The county of Halliburton underwrote the six million dollar loan for the original hospital build in the county. So this is a similar situation, you know, forty years in time. But it's a similar situation of the support provided by the county into into the the healthcare services for the for the community.
Mary?
I'm certainly in favor of helping, but this is a huge leap of faith and and what I'm counting on here is that uh. There will be more detail and uh there will be a business plan put forward. And uh, I would hope that the finance committee will have a look at that to give some comfort to council and the C A O and the staff. Before it gets here.
That's correct. I I agree, Counselor Fury. So, once we get through this stage right now, then we'll get more discussions with Triple H S. Getting the deep detail information that Counselor Carter's talking about is. getting the detailed information that Counselor Carter's talking about is you as well, and asking the questions around total project cost versus facility cost and how we fit into that, into that equation as well. And that would all come back to council prior to anything being finalized.
Walt, did you have a question? Okay, Counselor Ralph.
Yeah, my only other concern would be when we're doing all of what we're doing right now, I think it's important that we, we identify potential cost overruns. So that at the end of the day, we're not getting any surprises. I mean, we've got the good numbers and even if they do everything they're going to do, there is the opportunity in some cases, depending on what it is that we're talking about, that there could be a cost overrun, which is Murphy doing what Murphy does best. But I kind of hope that at the end of the day, we've got some way of identifying.
Yes, thank you. That's a good, a good point, counselor. As with any large capital project, the contingency piece would be built into the final number for the construction would take into account things of that nature, barring the unforeseen on, on, on large-scale projects like that.
Counselor, do you?
Thank you. And to that and further to what C A O Dyke has mentioned, the way I understand it, they would be borrowing from us because we can provide access to a lower interest rate, but we're not providing the only loan possibility. There are other loan possibilities. So if there is a cost overrun, and please tell me if I've misunderstood this. If there is a cost overrun, that doesn't impact us at all unless we agree for it to impact us. Our agreement for the loan is our agreement for the loan. And where they would go for cost overrun is entirely up to them and may or may not include us at our, at our indulgence.
That's correct. And the other thing to bear in mind as well is we are acting for, to in simplified terms, we're acting as an agent on behalf of Triple H S. The money going into the project or the money being supporting the loan and interest on the loan is not coming from the county. It's coming from Triple H S. So to Counselor Shell's point earlier, the only way it becomes a monetary, direct monetary impact to the county is if there is default or conversely to Counselor Ryle's point is if there was significant overruns and they needed more cash, then that would be a separate ask coming to council. It wouldn't be an automatic rollover, right? So I think that's the most important thing to realize is from a straight monetary standpoint and fiscal impact to the county is the money for the loan is not coming from the county. We're facilitating or acting as, as an agent on behalf of Triple H S into IO to allow for the borrowing and the preferred rate borrowing back to Triple H S, which saves them on, A, allows them access to the money, but saves them considerable amount of money on interest payments over the, over the term of the loan.
Deputy Warden.
One of the things that I just wanted to, to say in response to the concerns about risk is that, you know, although there is some risk associated with this, the alternate risk is even greater to us. And if that's if the Triple H S defaults on their ability to move forward with long-term care, it lands in our lap. And to me, that is a huge risk for us.
Other comments? Counselor Carter.
Yeah, I think the, there's going to be cost overruns on any project, obviously. I mean, that's, you know, and now in this world of tariffs on and off every second day, it's, it's, it's probably even riskier. But, you know, notwithstanding that, you know, if, if there is a requirement for Triple H S to get more money, they're coming to us. You know, they, you know, they don't, they don't have huge bank capabilities, I imagine. And if they went to the bank, it would be too expensive. So, you know, they would want to come to us so that we could get IO funding. But again, I'm, you know, I want to support this and the sixteen million dollars may be palatable to me. But if it was twenty-six million dollars of, you know, again, taxpayer money, I may have a, you know, a different consideration. And so it's, it's, it's a very difficult situation right now, particularly with these numbers being so preliminary. And, you know, there, there's almost orders of magnitude of, of difference between what they're presenting today and what it seems it's costing other people to build similar facilities and so on and so forth. And I'm particularly concerned about the infrastructure that may or may not be required. Because, you know, particularly long-term care homes take up more water and wastewater than other types of facilities like homes and so on. So this is, this is something that makes me very nervous. And I agree with Counselor Fury that I think that, you know, we as the finance committee should be involved with this all the way through in, 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 in looking over what, what we're doing.
Mr. Warden Burton, back to further to Counselor Carter, and forgive me if I'm repeating myself. Fully understand your comments and, and, and similar to my response to Counselor Fury. That is fully the intention of what's going in. We're not going into this blind. It's, it's providing a level of comfort and support to Triple H S that there is a support from the county, obviously within certain restrictions to bring the much-needed expansion of the long-term care facilities into our community. Having said that, as I said before, all the documentation with respect to this project as it reaches the point of finalization, which would, in our case, would be the submission of the loan request to IO would come back before council prior to anything getting to that stage. Because we need to come through council to finalize that piece. We're not asking for that final finalization right now. We're asking for the, the, the indication of the support for the project going forward, subject to the review or the completion and the review of the, of the agreement with Triple H S with respect to all the, all the things that we talked about and all very valid points. But I think importantly, unless asked otherwise by Triple H S, this is being brought forward on the premise that the funding, the actual payment, the actual flow of money for the project is coming from Triple H S and not the county, right? So unless they come, to your point, counselor, unless they come forward with a secondary act saying, we need X outside of the borrow from IO that we're, we submit on IO, that's a completely different conversation with respect. To your point, you use the example of servicing. If it was around servicing, different conversation that would come to the council and that would be part of the discussion. One of the things that I will be doing when we get through, assuming we get through today, is that those exact questions to Triple H S, off-site servicing, all the stuff that goes with any development of any site for an all-in cost, that's going to be, that would be requested as part of the loan going forward. And then that information would come back to, would come back to council with respect to, okay, we're good to go, submit the application and move forward. And part of that would be, I think, to Counselor Fury's comments with respect to their demonstration, their ability to support the new program on the hundred and sixty bed, sorry, the hundred and sixty bed facility going forward, which would be back to Counselor Shell's comments about the ability to fulfill their obligations thus and the payment of the loan going forward. So all that information will come back to council prior to the final submission going forward. And council will be fully briefed on any changes, any modifications, anything that is required of council to make the final decision.
Other questions? Counselor Carter.
I think that's a little bit less than what Counselor Fury and I were asking, but if we are going to provide a letter of support, we should put in that the sixteen million is what we're, you know, we would be supporting and stated outright that that's the number that we're supporting at this point.
That is how the draft has been made, at sixteen million.
Other questions? Counselor Ralph.
I have a question, but I'm just making a comment at this point. But for instance, like, I know I totally and absolutely support what we're doing here. I also am hearing from, from C A O think that all of our answers, no, excuse me, all of our questions are either being answered or going to be answered before this is done. I think we should just proceed with it, wait for the report to come back and make a decision at that time. Because as far as I'm concerned, the decision is merely this confirmation of the information that we've already received. So I have no more. The only reason I'm saying this is because we've spent a lot of time debating it for good reasons. But I think at the end of the day, that we either have to decide to pass this or not. I'm at this point in time ready.
Any other comments? Resolution.
The staff report, C A O zero-two twenty-two-five, expansion of long-term care services in the county of Halliburton be approved. And further, that C A O will be directed to prepare a draft financing agreement between the county of Halliburton and Halliburton Highlands Services, Triple H S, for the proposed expansion consolidation of the Triple H S long-term care facilities for council's review and consideration. And further, that the Warden on behalf of County Council is authorized to issue a letter of support to Triple H S as identified and scheduled into this report.
Could have someone move? Counselor Ryle, second by Deputy Warden Danielson. All in favor? It's carried. Now to Public Works, Public Works' work plan for March. So then.
Morning, Gordon, and members of council. My first report is the work plan update. Just a few items to note, load restrictions were implemented on Monday, March tenth, so last Monday. And hopefully, a sign of spring is here or around the corner. As well as Public Works Department's happy to announce the hiring of John Granger as our new fleet coordinator mechanic, which started, he started on February twenty-fourth. So John will be a good addition to our team. And as well as the mole remediation next door at the L R O was completed on February twenty-eighth. And staff will be bringing a fulsome report, update report on April ninth, I believe, this. I made a mistake in the report that it was going to be at March twenty-sixth, but it's going to be April ninth for that. And we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for so? No? Resolution? Oops, Mary, sorry.
Not related to the report, but we got a mass of signs going up all over the county on county roads that are, and I know they're not permitted. Then we got these, Stop the Condors, those signs have been up on the county road for, they, they put them up, but they never take them down. Is there any penalty that we can impose on these people or get them to do the right thing?
Well, we, we do have staff that go around and remove those signs. And right now, our staff has been pretty, pretty busy with plowing and winter maintenance. But we'll have our seasonal staff starting shortly. And we have one person dedicated to signs installation removal. But our signs, you know, we do, we do try to manage those as much as possible.
Road for a drive was a new.
Thank you.
Other questions? Resolution?
That report, P W S O six to twenty-two-five, Public Works Work Plan March Update, be received as information.
Someone move? Counselor Carter, second by Counselor Shell. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you.
My next report, next two reports are good news reports. The staff are recommending approval of toward the twenty-two-five Hot Mix Project. The tender closed on March fourth and we received five submissions. And the recommended bid was below budgeted amount. And staff are recommending accepting the Dufferin Construction Company bid as being low bid and meeting all requirements. The budget amount was one million, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And the recommended bid price came to one point one million dollars, including non-recoverable taxes. So providing us basically a thirteen point five percent savings on, on the, between the budget and the bid price. And Dufferin, the county has done business with Dufferin before, a long time ago. But I feel comfortable with the contractor.
Very good. Questions? Resolution?
That staff report, P W S O four twenty-two-five, approval to award the twenty-two-five Hot Mix Project tender be approved and that bylaw be presented, authorizing the Warden and clerk to execute an agreement with Dufferin Construction Company.
If someone move, Counselor Fury, second by Counselor Carter. All in favor? It's carried.
Our next report is the staffer recommending the award of the twenty-two-five Potash Bridge Rehabilitation Project. The tender closed on February twenty-fifth. We received eleven bid submissions was, yeah, is quite impressive. I was glad to see all those submissions. Staff are recommending accepting K B Constructors, Inc. being low bid and meeting all requirements. The budgeted amount was one million dollars and the recommended bid price was seven hundred, seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars, including non-recoverable tax, which gave us a difference of roughly twenty-eight point eight percent savings in that project as well. And staff did check references with no issues, no red flags or anything. And they were recommended for re-tendering. So it's a good news story there.
So I had a couple of questions or comments, but I just, I couldn't figure out why there was such a difference in the pricing.
Honestly, I, that is basically preparatory to the companies on their overhead and materials that they bring in or subs. Essentially, yeah, there was quite a range between the low bid and the, and the high bid. A lot of times, some companies bid and they have an allotment of, of contracts and it just provides a high bid and hope for the best. But I, I think they were pretty, pretty good bids. There was a few that were in, in a close range, so you can see that it's competitive and, and pretty honest bidding.
And have we worked with this group before?
No, they, we have not worked with them. They've been around for a few years. And from what I understand, they are bits and pieces from different companies that created this one company. And they seem to have a good reputation and do good work.
I was just going to say, it's, it's really good to see the number of bids that you're getting in and the, the prices that we're getting, given the current climate. It's, it's a real positive thing.
Other comments or questions? Resolution?
The staff report, P W S O five twenty-two-five, approval to award the twenty-two-five Potash Lake Bridge Rehabilitation Tender be approved and that a bylaw be presented, authorizing the Warden and clerk to execute an agreement with K B Constructors, Inc.
If someone move, Deputy Warden Danielson, second by Counselor Fury. All in favor? It's carried.
Thank you.
Just watching the vote there. Thank you. Bylaws?
That the following bylaws listed under the heading consideration of bylaws being enacted and passed, bylaw forty-two ninety-seven, a bylaw authorizing an agreement with Dufferin Construction Company and bylaw forty-two ninety-eight being a bylaw authorizing an agreement with K B Contractors, Inc.
Someone move? Deputy Mary Wyle, Counselor Day. All in favor? It's carried. I guess the motion, are we going to close or should we have a break first?
Take a break first.
Okay. Have a ten-minute break. Okay, thank you. Confirmation by law?
That bylaw forty two ninety nine being a bylaw confirmed the proceedings of the March twelfth, twenty twenty five meeting of Halbert County Council be considered to be read a first, second, and third time and finally passed.
Someone move councillor Shell, second by councillor McTechny. All in favor? It's carried. Adjournment? Adjournment?
That the March twelfth, twenty twenty five meeting of Halbert County Council be adjourned at ten forty AM.
Someone move councillor Carter second by councillor McTeckney. Councillor McTeckney is second by councillor Carter. All in favor? It's carried, thank you. Thanks Walt for coming in.
Walt, can you hang on for a second? Walt, can you just hang on for a sec?
Yeah.
So are we done?